Good evening, everyone who's joining us in the room and via Zoom for our August 2023 monthly meeting of the Village Board. This is the monthly meeting where we hear from our departments, standing boards, and municipal partners with updates on what's happened in the last month. And it has been a month. May I have a roll call, please? We have with us tonight Deborah Petroski, who is taking her first flight in the cockpit to Louisiana as deputy clerk. She is quite responsible for the meeting tonight with assistance from Karen, who's the secretary to the standing boards. We're tag teaming this evening on a training.
That's me on the V-horn.
Okay, so trustee Valdi?
Here.
Trustee Fatty?
There.
Trustee Starbuck?
Allison.
Deputy Mayor Phillips Woods?
Here.
And Mayor Paul?
Yeah.
Thank you. Item three, opportunity to request a vote to modify or add an agenda item. I would like to request that we move item 13C, discussion of Hudson Highlands Spirit Trail Data Review Committee candidates, that we move that to executive session at the end of the agenda after bills, since we are discussing employment history qualifications. May I have a second to move that by them? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, announcements. A couple of things. First, a lot of folks have been in touch about yard waste. There's a lot of debris from these storms. Yard waste is next Wednesday. So people soon be out of your way. I'm sorry, Wednesday night for pickup Thursday. And then the big announcement tonight is from the governor's office and the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services, which is that a new funding stream has been made available, an additional $3 million in emergency assistance for homeowners in identified counties. Putnam has been included in that list. Grants of up to $50,000 to a total of 3 million. It is for damage incurred at the primary residence for homeowners who meet the program's income guidelines, which is defined or defined as incomes at or below 80% of the area median income. So hopefully some folks in Cold Spring Nelsonville and Phillips Town will qualify who had damage. Also, the damage must not be covered by any other federal, state, local recovery program fund or private insurance, third-party insurer. There is issues reports that there's a low likelihood that individual assistance will be released by FEMA. So this is an alternate stream that creates possibilities for folks who will be, who are likely to be left out of individual assistance from FEMA. So it's great news. Hopefully folks will get some help.
Is it for some first serve? Do you have a sense about finding?
It's up to $3,000. The application portal opens on, thank you for that. The application portal opens on Friday, and we'll get the link up on our website and on social media. I'm sure it's going to be on the legislator's site and the county website and the town's website as well. And then? Till the money's gone?
Bye.
Yep. That's your understanding as well, right? Let's later. Okay. Item five. I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for new chapter 76 procurement and modifications. I'm sorry, did I say 76? It's on the brain still. 86 procurement and modification of 130 water. The drafts were made available to the public as required. The introduction of 86 allows the village to consider not only the lowest price in bids, but also highest quality and long-term effectiveness. So the definition of what's best value expands. That's part A. Part B is it allows us to piggyback on the procurement process of other political, yes, other political subdivisions, state and nationally, that have done a bidding process. And this is great for things like Big Billies, right? So we're not reinventing the wheel. Big items like that, it's really helpful. So that is the purpose of 86. We'll talk in more detail about 130, but the sort of the summary is it builds in specific procedures related to water emergencies, drought situations, like we experienced last summer. It enables enforcement of this chapter and violations by the, or it will, the code enforcement office, the wastewater superintendent, and the Cold Spring Police. That's one of the things I want to talk about tonight. So I think there are a number of things that we need to discuss as a board and a couple of modifications to consider. But I'd like to begin with.
Did we have a second?
I haven't made the motion yet. I haven't finished the motion.
So while we're, is there someone in the waiting room?
Thanks. So at any rate, I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing, take initial public comment, and then it will be my proposal afterward to continue the public hearing if the board supports that. So first, are there any members of the public who would like to make comment on either proposal for chapter 86 or 130, either joining us in person or online? Ms. Early, if you could state your name and address for the record?
On the program due to first. On chapter 86, the chapter is missing page numbers. The format of the chapter section should be 86 dash X, not 86 points with no blank spaces as illustrated in the index. That's not the case within the chapter. There is an 86.3 and two different 86 dash 3. So there should only be one, and the front form is 86 dash 3. 86 dash 3B2. Today of the number before using the decimal number. For example, 20,000 in alpha followed on parentheses. That looks something like that. The last comment should, ampersand, sorry. I can't remember the name of the character. Should 86.3 local law and the text that follows it be eliminated? That's 86.3, not 86 dash 3. Those are my comments on chapter 86.
Before you continue, could I ask you a clarifying question? Are you, when you, that last statement that you made, are you referring to the bold 86.3?
Yes.
Thank you. And one, did you have any comments you wanted to make on 130? Thank you for your comments on 86.
On 130, on the time limit for, this is 130 dash 20A, 1E. On the time limit for evening, out evening watering hours, we change to something early, say 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., so that watering can be done in daylight hours. This is under the first emergency situation. Second, what emergency status will occur when the upper reservoir is undergoing repairs? Third, under what conditions will the village of Cold Spring begin using water from the New York City Aqueduct? And what conditions will the village of Cold Spring, under what conditions will the village of Cold Spring cease using water from the New York City Aqueduct? 138 dash 18A, 138, 18B. Should the phrase, the mayor, comment with the approval of the board of trustees, be changed to the Board of Water Commissioners? 130 dash cross C. The sentence that begins, quote, "As of 7/1/2017", it's going to be expanded to include the cellular endpoint replacement formed in 2022.
Can you say that one more time, Marie, please?
Yes, this is 130 dash 12C. This is an old portion of the chapter. The sentence will begin, "As of 7/1/2017", should be expanded to include the cellular endpoint replacement formed in 2022. The statement, the phrase, paragraph refers to any other replacement being the financial burden of the homeowner. And the 2022 cellular endpoint replacement, the installation of replacement was done in the village's space.
I'm following the logic. Thank you.
130, 20A, 1D. The phrase, "From any source", should be modified to "From the village of Cold Spring Water System", the project wells and rainbows, to name just two, which should be able to be used. The phrase "from the village of Cold Spring Water System" is used throughout. It's in this particular section where it is deleted. That's why we continue the sentence. 130, 20A, 3. "Is, is not a defined commercial, is not a defined commercial use in chapter 134. I recommend it be deleted. However, bed and breakfast and toilet should be all. This is in the section where they're talking about laundry. 130, 20A, 1E. The identification of those items, which can only be watered during specific times of the day, specifically lawn, ornament, or plant, tree, or garden, should be repeated for bottom in 130, 20A, A, E, R, and again in 130, 20B, 1B. In some cases, one of those elements is deleted. And I think it should, the same phrase should be used in all sections. 130 dash 15E, the phrase bracket amended 8/24/21 by local law 28/21 should be bolded. It is bolded in the current version of 130 that's on the village website. I don't know how it got.
I know.
A few more. 130 dash 2, this is definitions, unit. 134, 3, which is a reference in that sentence, does not contain a definition of either a one-family resident or residential unit. 130 dash 14D, village, lowercase d, should be village, uppercase D. And I think this is the last one. 130, 18A. The last sentence should be reworded from "To conserve water for domestic household and sanitary uses and for fire protection, to include reasonably necessary commercial and industrial use." A previous statement of those elements did include reasonably necessary commercial and industrial use. I believe for correctness, it should be included here as well. That's it.
Thank you very much. I hope that you'll give the clerk a copy of your thorough comments. Thank you very much. Okay, so some of what Marie has raised overlaps with some of the things. Oh, sorry. Are there any other members of the public who wish to make a statement this evening, either in the room or online? Seeing none, I would make a motion to close the public hearing on chapter 86. Second, any exceptions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to keep the public hearing open on chapter 130. All in favor?
Aye.
Um. Mine noted. First, Laura, why don't you talk with us about you and Matt? Do we have Matt Krueg with us yet? Yes. The water and wastewater superintendent is with us. You and Matt had some additional conversation related to percentages at which emergency measures would be declared. Do you want to cover that? You had updated data based on the end of July.
You want to talk us through that? Is it possible to bring up the slides?
Yes.
So Matt keeps excellent records of water levels in our reservoirs, and he shared that data with me. And with some help from, and I marked, made a couple of figures that I think are helpful. So you'll see that, so this is showing water levels 100% down to, it's actually 20 at the bottom. Over, you know, January to December, since 2014. And so you can see that it's been a lot of different levels over time, but we all really remember 2022, which is the low, it gets down to the lowest level. And so I think what's helpful is to see that currently we have a proposal for a stage, the stage one restrictions, which are like quite moderate restrictions on water use, more moderate than what we went into last summer. They hit at when you're already pretty far down, down on the decline. And in the past, our water levels have declined quite quickly. And then we've never actually hit, at least in these recent years, hit stage two or stage three of this, of this tiered system. So, so that's one thing to consider is looking at the proposed thresholds compared to our recent past. And this doesn't include 2023, but my guess is that it would be toward the top, given how rainy it's been. And then the next. Um, do advance, one more slide. Karen? The next slide shows when we declared the drought declarations last year. So, so then we declared it earlier than, that's the declaration happened at that first blue line in August, August 12, right? And so it was when it was at about 80%. And then we released it when it was at about 60%. Little over 60. So this is all, this is all to say, I, you know, we, I think our threshold, we may want to be more conservative in our thresholds to give us a faster time to react, so that we don't have to put in the more deponium measures and be really worried about relying on aqua or other kinds of effects. I think that like everyone doing their small part as a stage one is prudent to start that earlier. And so I'm really interested in hearing what Matt has to say if he thinks that starting at maybe 75% or another level of the, of the kind of average reservoir level might make sense for stage one, given our past history. And Matt, if you want to say anything about, you know, your kind of reflections on these stages or on our history of water? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah. No, I mean, since 2019, it was kind of like you have it pretty well documented in the, the previous graph there. But yeah, I mean, the, the reservoir does definitely swing a little bit more than I guess previous records have shown. But yeah, I'm not opposed to being more proactive as opposed to reactive, because I mean, once we do start releasing the waters, it's, there's really no control as of getting it down there and processing it. And, you know, the object is to keep it from spilling over Foundry Brook as opposed to, you know, where we are right now is just, everything is kind of continuously full levels and just running down and spilling off past the plant as well as trying to keep every drop and processing it. So I have no problem with being more proactive and being a little bit more, you know, conservative with raising the level on that angle.
Do you have a proposal of an alternate threshold?
Uh, no, I think we discussed both of them going kind of with like the 80, 60, 40. And maybe, like you said, additional or modifying stage one. But I think 75 is a pretty good number if we kept it around there.
At stage one?
Possibly, I don't.
I guess I don't understand. Let's make sure we're clear on where you mean the number that you just stated out loud. That would be like, so Matt has 80, 60, 40 would shift all of the thresholds up one? Or you could imagine 75, 55, 35?
That's possible as well. Yeah, I mean, I was just kind of spitballing. I didn't really have too much time to rerun the numbers before jumping on. But yeah, I mean, above 70%, I think, like I said, would definitely be more proactive as opposed to reactive and trying to scramble and be more stringent in a rush timeframe.
And if we shift to 80, 60, 40, then last summer, we would have gone into stage two.
Right.
You know about, if we look at the various restrictions, think about if that makes sense. And frankly, I think like what we, we were basically, the restriction for similar to stage two, that, that we did all summer, you know, during the whole time last, last.
This makes a lot of sense to me. It, water's precious. And the earlier we react, the better shape we're in. Does anyone have any concerns about that modification to 80, 60, 40? Prudent. Go ahead.
I'm just seeing, not so much about the numbers, but for sake of people understanding like what the difference is between like stage one and stage two, what they mean in terms of their action. Not so much our actions, but what they would need to do.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be, the code calls for a communication, for hearty communications on the part of the village when those proclamations are made, so that people are clear what happens, what can't happen at one stage. Matt, one, one item of public comment that was raised was, can you, can we be allowed to, to water earlier so that it's still light out? I think you, we had originally arrived at the hours we did because you were thinking about, you know, water burning off and evaporating.
Right, I think, I mean.
Do you think that there's any flexibility on, on that number, which is now nine to 10, 10 to 11?
Yeah, I think there should be a little bit of flexibility. I mean, not everybody's schedule accommodates that. And if they're going to be trying to accommodate with our restrictions and everything else moving forward, it's probably in the best interest to be a little lenient on that.
Is it, are, is it, are you comfortable with a, with a wider statement like after 8:00 p.m.?
Go ahead. I think one purpose of it is to restrict the amount of water as well. So if you say from eight to 11, then you could imagine someone having, running it for three hours. And so by making, I know this restricted, but I think one goal of it is both like you're reducing the evaporation, which is like precious water that's lost to the sun. So ideally, it's kind of after the sun, that, you know, they had a sun. But maybe it's after like full sunset, so we could shift a little bit earlier. But I think one, one goal, and to say, this is also the, we used other, we used Beacon and other locations that already have these kinds of regulations in place as models and found.
A one-hour time, time period. Yeah, I remember that from reading the beacon.
And, and also that you can water with a, with a watering can at any time, because that is a, you know, a quite small amount. You're very direct on your plant, that is not restricting. You can use cold spring water. You know, use a watering can rather than a, or a. Yeah.
You can use gray water, like by hand as well. Any thoughts on the time shift?
Be a little bit more flexible, but I do agree that a time limit, make that simple though.
So Laura, you want to, as we continue to modify, if you like something forward? I mean, I would think that eight to nine will be a reasonable period of time. It's done, done up in the summer, but it's on its way down.
Yep, I would agree with that.
Okay. Couple of other small things that, that stand out to me. Right now, the restriction on restaurants to provide drinking water only upon request is only part of a water emergency. And I think it's worth considering that it's all the time. There's a lot of water that gets poured in glasses and dumped. And it's not, we're not the only municipality that has taken a step to say water on my own request all year round. Do others have comfort with that?
Is the restaurateur at the table?
Yeah, well.
It's, we do, we waste a tremendous amount. Even when you ask people, we don't just go to the table and pour it. And I, so we do ask the drunk water and give them choices. But even then, they don't finish it. I don't know if it's just a habit where people think they should drink it, and then they ignore it when it's there. I'm not sure what the logistics would be in terms of service, but that's for us to figure out. But I, I do think that just hard launch putting water on table is basically. I was watering all my plants with it out in the garden. Anybody, anybody who didn't finish their water, quick and quick.
The gray water. It was, it was originally under stage two. And then after you mentioned it's an earlier sessions, Catherine, I moved it stage one, so.
I mean, I would be a proponent for always.
I just got a $1,400 water bill. I'd be happy for it to go back.
So, you know, as we continue the public conversation next week, folks want to sit with that idea? And if you have strong feelings about that, let us know as we continue.
You can't have water.
No, the water's on request.
I'd like to know what the other restaurant locations are equipped with.
I mean, it's, I've been in restaurants where it's right on the menu.
Yeah, I would put it on the bottom.
Okay. The, the other question, which is, I think Eliza had as well, related to use of water and violations. She, she asked a question in particular relating to 134, 8D, which said, "In addition to other remedies provided for by the law to village reinforce compliance with this article, by termination of water service and may refuse to restore water service until the property and our customers in full compliance with this article." Her concern was, is that something we're actually going to do? And do, should something that extreme be in place? My feeling is, if it's not in place, you don't have the capacity. You have to be enabled to do that. And there are situations where it makes sense to shut off water. So that is sort of the last recourse available. But if we don't have it stated in our ordinance, we don't have that option available. And I think too, that she was, if you'll remember back in the winter when we replaced the water meters, not the water meters, the endpoints that communicate use to, to the billing system, there were a very small number of people who declined have the upgrade done and will require hand readings. And we had talked at that time about sort of staging costs to make, to make non-compliance hurt. And I think we haven't, by simply addressing a singular fine of 250, we haven't addressed that table. It may be that it was longs more specifically in the, in the, in the fee schedule, but I think that we, a more specific reference to that particular violation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so that's a little bit back, back on that drawing board. And we also, under enforcement, we need to add enforcement in this section, in the later section, that it needs to be added in this section. Enforcement by water and wastewater, code enforcement, CSPD, and enabling code enforcement in the outside areas specifically.
So that's required both in the code and then also the intermunicipal items.
And so my understanding from, from John was that it needed, the enabling portion needs to happen here. And then the specifics with Nelsonville and Phillips Town will happen via intermunicipal agreement.
Yeah, okay. And we don't have it in there yet.
I, I think that, what, to Eliza's point, the statement is, the statement here of $250 is broad and doesn't address that particular circumstance. You know, that's not, it's not a difficult fix. We just need to make sure the language is there. For consistency, under 130, sorry, 130. A later portion related to violations, some page 130, 21. I'll get, we'll get the section when we go through and actually make the amendments. The imprisonment items still remain, and these come out. There was some public comment about mayor with the approval of Board of Trustees. I think it is correct that it should say Board of Water Supervisors. But I would also say that in every, there are three places where there's reference to the emergency orders being continued and then rescinded by the mayor. But it should consistently say, "In consultation with the Water and Wastewater Superintendent and the Board of Water Supervisors." Under one, between 130, 21 and 130, 22, we have failure of compliance. We have penalties, but again, we don't have the language of who the enforcement, we need the enforcement piece inserted. In this article, elements of this article and chapter shall be enforced by the Water and Wastewater Superintendent and/or the Code Enforcement Officer and/or the Cold Spring Police Department. And the reason, just for public information, And the reason, just for public information, why it's important to include the Cold Spring Police Department is that we have overnight violations with, we have had overnight violations with, um, sprinkling that the police officers see because they're here. Um, and Matt doesn't see because he's home sleeping if he's not responding to something else. Um, so giving, giving our officers the capacity to, to issue a violation is important. Um, and last, one thirty, one thirty twenty-four, those definitions that relate to, um, cross connection control, I think should live with the definition beginning of the chapter. Those were the comments I had. Others? Matt, anything else that you see?
Uh, none at this time.
Have we hit what you wanted us, what you felt was important to hit?
Uh, during that, for that chapter? Yeah, I believe so.
So again, we'll, we'll continue this public hearing to next week. So if there are any other, I knew, if there are any other comments from the public, we'll, you'll have another opportunity. Okay, now for everyone who's sitting painfully through this discussion and wants to get on to the next part of the agenda, we'll go to item six, reports from village departments. The accountant is on vacation, which is a rare thing and I'm happy about. So, um, just highlights the audit, she asked for an extension on the audit because of new software um, that's required for you, since she wants some time to learn that software, they has, um, approved that extension. Um, all of our reports are available online, so I'm not going to go through and we're not going to read all of the items. Um, but the, that the sort of highlights here that Michelle is working diligently, um, with Bureau of Emergency Services on FEMA. And I will say, thank you legislator and, um, and, and the county for extending, um, initial consulting services. The county hired a company called Meridian to assist with preparation of FEMA submissions for county infrastructure. Um, and initial exploratory conversations have been extended to the towns and villages as well. Um, so, um, Supervisor Ben Tassel and Mayor Winward and I met with Meridian yesterday to get some guidance related to FEMA that was super helpful. So, thank you to the county on that. FEMA process is going to be long and ongoing, so just be prepared that it's going to be on our agenda, um, for a while. Um, overall revenues and expenses, no unexpected changes occurred in July that would largely impact. Next monthly report will be quarterlies. Um, next on the agenda is roadways and facilities, is Bugsy on? Okay, um, I mean, can't thank, we can't thank this crew enough. We're now, you know, we are up at full, full team with summer help on. And it's, it's really helpful to have the additional bodies onboard um, in terms of storm response and all the other things that they're managing. Um, the one thing that I, I wanted to, I keep forgetting to raise with Bugsy during the day. Um, so I'm asking for help in remembering to do that is the, when they have time, the rip rap at the waterfront in, the weeds are really coming in there and need attention. But they've just done a fantastic job working for all of us in response to storms and working inter municipally.
It's, it's quite a breeze. I mean, you are, I encourage folks to read that, see, gives an amazing summary of everything that the department's been up to, especially in storm response, but everything's, but other things as well. They did a lot of work.
And I would note that in the, in the immediate aftermath of the storm, you know, when they, when they stabilized, what needed to be stabilized, they made sure that the, the library camp had wanted to put, we, we approved the library camp, putting a little library down at the waterfront and the kids would have been so disappointed and they made time, they stayed, they stayed late and, and made sure that that was available for the kids to have their opening ceremony and then the days after the storm. So that was lovely and it was much appreciated. Um, Matt, water and wastewater. We've got two items for you. One is your, one is your report and you've got lots of good things to tell us. And then we need to talk about, um, ongoing maintenance and calibration of equipment, the contract for that with HAC. Well, let's start with your report.
All right, uh, try and get through most of it. I mean, with the seventeen plus inches of rain we got, the reservoirs are nice and full, ninety-five percent plus. Uh, we also had a decrease in usage in July, which also is a pretty good thing. Bacteriological test came back in good standing. Uh, we, the aqueduct connection that has been made to, from the new side meter pit, uh, and was tested on Thursday, August third. So we're able to get water up there, uh, just waiting on D O E approval to move forward with additional work and floor measurement before we can say that that is complete. Uh, the dams, tectonic is helping with the responses to D C, the timeline and schedule for need of repairs at the upper and lower Cold Spring Foundry reservoirs. Uh, we did have one water leak on Fair Street, uh, majority of the service line did happen to be led. So it was a good repair on that. He's got a nice new copper service line. Uh, L E D upgrade at the water plant took place. Uh, sewer plant, uh, we did have some non-compliance for all the rain that came in, uh, with the I N I in the system. So we did have to fill out a report for that, for the July report. Uh, the auger, uh, we're going to need to replace the brush on that, so we're going to reach out for a quote on that. Fence line, we did have some, uh, tree fall down, take out a little section of the railing around the contact, but no structural damage to the cement or anything. But other than that, sledge hauling R P is out, so we've had a couple of, uh, contact from different various vendors that have stopped by and expressed interest, so looking forward to those coming in. And then, yeah, wrapping it up, uh, while we have the hydrant flushing at the end of the month going into September. Uh, but yeah, and then the last thing would be the HAC Analytic Equipment Service Agreement, where they, uh, would continue to come out for their quarterly visits of making sure that our equipment is calibrated and validated to the proper standards to ensure the quality of the water and wastewater.
Matt, could I ask you to just draw out briefly for clarity the, the statement that you made about a, a non-compliance report? And what that actually means after a storm, um, because you, we did not have, we did not have discharge.
We, we didn't have any overflows.
Any overflow. So can you explain that to the benefit of the public?
Uh, yeah, basically we are rated for half a million gallons a day. And if we do go over that volume coming into the sewer plants, that's considered a non-compliance for going over the max design. So with the amount of rain and the I N I that we do have in the system, for a total of, out of the thirty-one, we had five days where we went over, uh, the five hundred thousand gallon a day limit. But during them, especially the first one where.
Pause for a second for the later I N I?
Yep, uh, intrusion and infiltration basically just ways that, uh, water that wasn't flushed down a drain could get into our system.
And so if you have overflowing stormwater drain.
Uh, yeah, catch basins going down or, you know, waters going over the hard roadways into the manholes, uh, seeping in through cracks in the laterals, res, uh, you know, and the mains, uh, basically just collecting in the rainwater in the tanks in general. Uh, there's plenty of ways that it could come into it, but yeah, that definitely adds some pumps and basements that could be, uh, adding to the problem as well. I mean, there's a bunch of ways that it comes in there. But yeah, anytime that it goes over that, that's technically, uh, one way a non-compliance can happen. But yeah, no, we didn't have any overflows or anything like that. We slowed down, uh, as much as we could going through the process and turned off equipment to contain the solids and got the waters out of there safely in this process as we could.
Um, I asked you to draw that out because I think it's a, it's a real, um, you guys did amazing work during the storm when a lot of municipalities had wastewater operations fall apart. You maintained under incredibly strained circumstances, so really well done and thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Oh, I said, no worries.
Um, so you have, we have an ongoing, um, maintenance and, and, um, equipment calibration contract with HAC. This is something we look at every year, um, for equipment at wa, primarily at water, some at wastewater. Anything to add to that description, Matt?
Uh, basically, like I said, it's the manufacturer who supplied us with the equipment originally. So they come in and make sure that it is up to the original specs of when it was purchased. Make sure that, you know, everything is reading exactly that it should have been day one and as reliable as it can be. And that comes in quarterly. It's a, it's a really valuable service that, you know, takes it above and beyond just to make sure that we can continue producing the water that we do and the wastewater that we treat.
Just do like to make a motion related to the contract with HAC.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of HAC.
Discussion on favor? Are any opposed? And I, I say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, Matt, so we got, because the agenda was organized as it was, we are now finished with the discussion of one thirty for tonight.
Okay.
You don't, don't feel the need to stay, to stay on.
Okay.
Really like to, you, you don't need to stay on. And, and same to the folks who are in the room to report tonight. Welcome to stay through the meeting, but you don't feel obliged to stay through, through all of it. Okay, um, code enforcement. Thank you. Uh, code enforcement. Um, July income of sixteen hundred, fiscal year income. About twenty-eight hundred. Interesting to be going well, um, in our collaboration with Phillips Town. Thank you very much. Police Department Officer in Charge Burke is with us this evening and if we could turn the camera to capturing his face, that'd be great.
Meeting, everybody. Um, report for July twenty twenty-three. Uh, we had seventy-one calls for service, a total of four hundred and sixteen here. Uh, we had one arrest for a mental health, uh, incident. Helen actually did go on his own, but still had it transported under a mental health order. We had, um, eight moving violations, sixty-one parking summonses, a total of sixty-nine, and a total of, that is four hundred and eighty-one. We have tried to highlight some of the calls that were a little bit on the uptick. We really didn't have any. It's kind of been an, an average of what we deal with in the search section some months. I mean, that's really about it. Just another, we're going away. Please give us dock house requests so we can check on your house, uh, as you are away.
Available on the village website or by request from the clerk.
I, uh, I noticed there was an incident across the street on Fair Street. I believe it was the night of the twenty-eighth, there was a young woman in some level of distress. She had been in my courtyard. She, I think she had been in a couple of different officiants in the village, you and another. You weren't in uniform and there was uniformed officer. And I don't know what was going on, but I could tell that it was being handled in a very sensitive and delicate manner.
Thank you. Yes, that was worth my attention. I was, uh, helping with the fire academy of the firehouse and somebody, uh, resident came up and, and talked to us about a suspicious package or a bag that was on Fair Street right outside of Office of One Fair. I went down to take a look at it, try to locate the owner. The owner eventually came over, uh, seemed a little distraught. And we wound up getting her back with her, her suitcase and finding out that she was staying locally in one of the, uh, hotels. So she, she definitely had suspicious, but, uh, yeah, during, uh, as per hip violation, but hip for a positive violation, second.
No, no, I don't, I, I just, I, I could just tell from afar, isn't that, that the, all the training, all the, you know, community stuff works.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And that was overly Craig Davenport, who's also, he was in uniform, I was not.
Yeah.
Did a great job.
Good. I was leading the restaurant and she had been in the courtyard and I was turned, and I was about to make the call. And I went and saw them.
We have an exceptional team right now, all, all fifteen. Um, and I'm pleased to say that Larry just is not coming in for a single shift this week. We are finally.
I'm still working, believe me.
You're working, but we have, we, we have the bodies now to cover shifts well, um, and, um, there's never a time in a, any twenty-four hour period where I have any concern about any of our officers on duty. We just have an exceptional team and we're grateful to all of you. Um, update on body camera policy. We do have the body cameras. Um, Officer Hippel is assisting with prepping them to be ready to go. Um, I am really eager to get these cameras on our officers' vests. Um, I see them as a statement of this board's confidence in our officers, right? We have so much confidence that we are happy to have your activities, um, recorded. Um, I think it will be a, a, a help to us with, um, issues going forward. Laura gave some feedback. So Larry and Karen have been working together to get Lexipol ready to go live. The policies were provided, the body camera policy was provided to trustees for individual conversation with Karen. Then we'll discuss as a group in public. So Laura raised some questions that, that make clear that the package of, it would be helpful to have the package of policies that are also referenced in the body pol, the body camera policy in front of us at the same time. So Karen's going to follow up with reporting that. And then when we have the public discussion, we'll have them as a group. We're talking about, you know, policies related or records, maintenance, release, protected information, et cetera. It makes sense to, to review them in a chunk. So, coming soon. Any, that seem like a process everybody's comfortable with? Fire Company, hello, Chief Phillips?
Seventy-four, eleven months. Twenty-eight for related storms. One structure fire. Pretty normal. The elevators, they're kind of all the same spot. That issue, that issue has been corrected.
Again.
Thanks to, uh, public, your own purchases. Reach out to M T I, so see how it goes for the rest of summer.
Yeah, it's, it is, it's an ongoing meditation.
Can I ask about, is it, if it happens again, do we want to put a, some kind of warning note on the elevator?
Okay.
I put a, turn it off and I put a padlock on. Problem is we turn it off, clear the computer. So they state that they don't know what the issue is.
So this is, it's a new, sorry, it's a relatively new elevator. Um, that has been problematic since it was installed.
Yeah.
So sorry for contact.
Yes, so in order to get the people, because there's always somebody in it.
Yeah.
And in order to get them out, have to shut the power. So I'm not sure how much I believe the whole clearing the code, but not an elevator mechanic, so.
Yeah, just wondering if we want to.
Good so far, so see how it goes.
It keeps acting up and warning people.
The reality is, it's, it's an accessibility issue, right? We are, M T A is required to provide ADA accessible access to the tracks and it needs to get sorted out. Yes, it's hugely frustrating. I know Nancy, you've tried to help a number of times and.
I, I don't, I'm not sure whether the county's contacting, but we can contact, I can contact our representative to the M T A board.
Thank you, great.
Just to back up to that, I just had a meeting with the brand new captain that covers this area. Uh, his name happens to be Bolger. He is as cousin at Bolger who worked for us.
Metro North Police Officer? Oh, okay.
So if we need anything with him, I give him a call.
That's fantastic.
Some somewhat bureaucratic, that the, your, your, bureaucracies need to speak to each other and fix the actual system.
Well, I don't know.
Rescuing people. Well, I was freaking out just thinking about it.
I know, it does make me freak out just thinking about it. If you can advise how we can help as a board with the advocacy, please, either one of you, please let us know.
How about a, a letter?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've sent multiple letters. It's just not resolved.
I'll call the board and get record of those and leave them with my.
I mean, there hasn't been a letter sent recently, but there have been multiple letters. Thank you.
And I will say at, at the structured fire, I have been working at the, uh, Cold Spring Fire Department and North Highlands. And now responding fire companies did a great job, no injuries, uh, I think that was excellent. Response time again.
Haven't been a fire in the village in some time. Um, it is always terrifying. I mean, a, a significant structural fire, um, it is terrifying for people to experience, um, and we're grateful to you. Everyone was, everyone got out safely, um, could have been a lot worse. So, thank you very much. I think so.
Last one was thirteen high.
Little parrot string. Okay, anything else, Chief?
Um, yeah, just one thing, especially from the red light down. If you call nine one one, you're most likely going to get Orange County. So just make sure that you state you're in Putnam County. Cause it, you'll give them all the info. And by the time they realize you're in Putnam County, it could be a couple of minutes, so it's just waiting time. And by the time Orange transfers it to Putnam, and that's all because of South Tower is right there. There's no way to fix that.
It's the first place to paint, right?
Yeah, exactly. So the best thing would just say, I'm in Putnam County.
And then they'll transfer you to dispatch.
I mean, they answer the phone, Putnam. They answer the phone, but the phone nine-one-one, they're not going to listen to that.
Is that, is that, is it below ninety, or is it?
It is, it's mostly all of the village, but definitely from the red light. Calling yourself on red light.
And if you do that, if you call with a landline?
A landline, you're probably. Didn't get it, I should get one.
For clarity, this, it does happen very quickly, that Orange connects to Putnam and gets you help, but when, when precious, when seconds are precious, it's.
Yeah, it was, not all information can be transferred, so it's better to just start out.
And I think that Phillips Town and the county have. Settled the lease for the communications tower at the garage, right?
Yes.
Superb. And Larry, I think you said you are up and running with the new radios right now, and are waiting for the improvement of the new tower, so just fantastic to finally be able to close that chapter. Um, okay. Justice Court, pretty standard, I'm not seeing, lost it in my pile here, number of defendants, and remember, it is in the public record, oh, here it is. Eight defendants, nine charges, income of, monthly income of ten thousand five hundred twelve dollars. Okay, moving on to standing boards and committees, do you have anyone from HTRB? No, it's been pretty quiet on the building front. Signs approved for Holyhead Lawrence, and their next meeting is the end of August. Planning Board. Planning Board has been, as, as, depart, excuse me, retail spaces and office spaces move on Main Street, the planning board is following on with site plan. Change, changes of use, site plan changes, sign changes, et cetera, that's been the bulk of their work in the last month. And we have had two applicants for the open planning board position, I have asked Chair Daniels to arrange interviews with the planning board, if the planning board can make a recommendation. Ultimately, the appointment is made by this body, but we, of course, would like the input from the planning board. zoning board of appeals did not meet, I expect that we, as the chapter one thirty-four is deployed. Which is natural with new zoning codes, there will be the need for interpretations, referrals for interpretations. For the zoning board, so we'll probably see those coming. Tree advisory board is on a summer hiatus, they will report again next month, but just to note. With surveys recently done by Saint Mary's, the trees along Main Street are on village property, and we have assumed maintenance of those trees. One was, one fell during the storm, Saint Mary's, while crews were deployed on the lawn for that tree, we encouraged them to deal with the tree behind, and they did. The trees that are on the Chestnut Street side are on the property line with Saint Mary's, so we need to have conversations with Saint Mary's about how maintenance goes forward. Bugsy has requested post-storm for some emergency work to be done to a couple of those trees, a tree was lost there also. But he was concerned about other limbs, so that work is being done, and we need to work with Saint Mary's to figure out how we manage costs on our shared trees if we. So more on that when Jenna's back around. And I don't think we have anyone from REACT, just a quick update on Mayor's Park. During the storm, the, what, what we. The storm drain that runs under Mayor's Park Pavilion had a sinkhole. In attempting to address that sinkhole. Bugsy identified a quite serious electrical problem caused by old remediation at that site related to a previous hole in the pipe. He immediately called Central Hudson, the power is shut off from the pole, and will be properly restored. We're working with electricians, they're hard right now, it's a very hard time to come by with all of the storm repairs that are happening, but it is in process. There is also a sewage drain issue, pump issue there that needs to be addressed post-storm. We're hoping that will be addressed in-house on Thursday, for the time being, we are, we are very close to the August fifteenth. Uh, start again of Halane's IMA, when Halane uses the field, they have been working with Bugsy on repairs field post-storm. But we're eager to get that, the bathrooms up and going again, so that they're available. For Halane's use and for event use, so for now, I think our events coordinator is here, events are being reviewed by the REACT Commission. With pending, pending the full restoration of operations at that pavilion. Cover it?
Yep.
Okay. Updates from our municipal partners, hello Deputy Supervisor?
Good evening, everybody. Quite a few things on agenda, but nothing big, we hope introducing term director Chris Owens, I know that you've been introduced to him.
Yeah.
He has a pretty impressive resume, I would have to say that, so I think he'll, we asked him if he's going to become full-time, he couldn't really answer that at the particular time, but at least I have somebody in place now, so. But again, it seems like a real nice guy, and has a very good background. Resolution introducing a local law to adopt a community preservation plan, resolution adopted, met the mandate to understand the Metro North commuter railroad companies regarding the crossing the metro metro, Metro Station Road. I know a couple months ago, seven of the crew members here, right, discussing this. Anyways, they're gonna be, just gonna spend a lot of money down to do some improvements with the railroad there, they're gonna use post-up here, there's special crossing for pedestrians as well. So, that's, that, resolution with Putnam County Garden use of the town's highway to the garage for property emergency community, the tarot, as you just discussed, this is from what I understand, the last piece of the puzzle, once this is up and coming. They can move forward with the whole entire county. Resolution authorized supervisor sign an intermissible agreement with the village's coal spring to fuel, to use our fueling system for your vehicles, I don't know, when you start.
We're talking about that tonight.
When do you plan on starting that, you know?
Bugsy needs to use down, well, not just Bugsy, the fire company, the police department, highway wastewater, and you need to use down what we have in the supply, and then we can decommission that. We'll talk about that in more detail in a bit.
Just curious about that. Resolution contract, the new cleaning service, we had a little issue with our current cleaning partner, anyway, we hired somebody new, and he's a local person, over. Expected to see good things happen, we have two openings, REACT Commission and the zoning board, also e-waste, back in June, we started charging for e-waste, because we had a six-month pilot program. I got in touch with the county, and then county got me in touch with a company now that's doing it for free, so right now I can bring all your e-waste up to our recycling facility for free.
Awesome. Thanks.
We had a lot of e-waste, believe me, you had, put, six tons of e-waste. Six-month period.
Well, it is a rare pleasure for us to have County Legislative Montgomery with us in person, she is often in legislative session when we are in session, so we don't get to see her very frequently, I'm delighted you're here, what's going on in your world?
I'm so happy to be here, I think I may, like, miss those committees that I'm not on. I have no vote on those committees, so I should just, I get a better idea of what's happening, and I really have to say, I love how everything is intertwined, everything I'm doing, you're doing, and the town is doing. And, you know, public safety and emergency services, all of my report has been somewhat discussed tonight, and it's kind of cool, so good evening. You heard that Senator Gillibrand was in town, thank you, trustee Bozey for attending, and deputy supervisor Flaherty, and I have to say, the star of it was your chief. Chief of Officer in Charge. Not only does he do a great job on the street protecting the public, but his diplomacy when there is a diplomat in town is beyond, you know, compare. And it's pretty exciting when, whatever your politics are, it's kind of exciting when a federal senator comes to town, and she hasn't been here in a really long time. So this was, this was an important event to introduce her legislation called fend off fentanyl, which will hopefully cut off the supply of illegal drugs and hold traffickers accountable. And, you know, segueing into that, what we discussed last night at the county health committee meeting was our use of the opioid settlement funds. I've been waiting for a long time to hear about that, we're, I feel like we're a little bit behind, you know, other counties in the state, but they did set aside. Sorry, I lost my, they, they did open up requests for proposals for the funding that they have currently available, which is a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. We've only spent about eighty-five thousand dollars of that since we got it, and that was for a position for the prevention council, and I was all in favor of that, but now we've opened up. Requests for proposals so that local organizations may now apply to receive opioid settlement funds that we received as part of the landmark settlement. So the process will be collecting formal requests, the process has been initiated, and the county is seeking proposals that provide integrated co-occurring substance misuse and mental health treatment services. There's a portal where individuals and groups may submit their proposals. I've reached out to a lot of our local organizations, there was a press release that was submitted, and I know that our social services commissioner Mike Piazza will be contacting all of Putnam County providers in the near, in the near future. Like all biddings, you know, all proposals, they're accepting bid, they're accepting proposals until September first, so it's a short window of time. But I've heard since last night, and I could send that recording to the.
Great question.
There was a good discussion last night, it will also be on a rolling basis. Money's going to continue to come in from the settlement, so we're seeking proposals, so submit your proposals, if you need more information, contact me, or the information's available on the county website. And we also discussed that we found a site for the Putnam County Stabilization Center.
Amazing.
As you know, we set aside ARPA funding to establish that, and it is exciting, they found a location, I believe it's on Carmel Avenue in Brewster. It's, will be run by People's USA, which is the organization that runs the Duchess County Stabilization Center. And we did set aside two point three million dollars of county funding, People's USA will guide the renovation of this building, lots of county funding will be used. Until they max out that two point three million dollars, and then by year three, it just becomes a People's USA organization, so we're, you know, basically contracting with them.
Excuse me, Nancy, is it a, it's an existing structure that's being reused?
Okay, yes. So that, that's really exciting, and also on a public safety front, I went to a surprise, oh, just so you know, because I was at all these events, even though you don't see my picture in the paper, because it's usually cut out, I am at all these events. There was another event today, and it was a surprise event, very exciting, we had a press event to announce that one point three million dollars of ARPA funding will be reallocated, originally set aside for information technology, but. We will be building a new state-of-the-art fire training center, and Cold Springs' own Chief Phillips was on the advisory committee to plan this and move this forward, so it's really exciting to have our own people. So the new facility will replace the former center, instead of the Veterans Memorial Park, it will, including this tower that has not been utilized for over a decade. Due to its poor safety conditions, it will address the critical need for enhanced training opportunities for our dedicated firefighters. I mean, you know, there's no sense in buying equipment and funding fire departments if our people aren't trained, and I think, you know, I've called many of our chiefs, not all of them in my district, and just to get an idea, is everybody, I need to know, is everybody supporting this? You know, I see such great need in our fire departments for things like fire trucks and firematic gear and things like that, is this where we want this money to be spent, and the consensus is yes, so. Felt like I did my due diligence in calling, calling everybody, and everybody seems to be happy with that, we'll discuss that next week at the Protective Services Committee, it'll move forward quickly to the full edge. Meeting in September, and the funds will be allocated, and it will be billed within the year. And on a fun note, which is exciting, the joint Putnam County maternal health nurses are offering a mom's support group right at the Friendship Center on Thursdays from two thirty to four PM. At the Phillips Town Friendship Center, so thrilled that it's being used for.
That's huge.
In the afternoon, so, again, you won't read about it in the paper, but it's there.
That's huge. Villagers have been asking for better optimization of that space, it's mostly empty after lunches for seniors, that's great news. Nancy, do the Putnam County Home Health Nurses still visit every newborn home in the first two weeks?
Um. You know, I don't, I don't know, you know, they, not, I don't know, I can find out.
Love to know that.
Yeah.
No?
I never had.
It was a period of time where they visited every newborn home and checked infant health and mother health, but also had eyes on. Domestic, yeah, things that should be on the radar, and it was a really wonderful program. I'm just curious if that's still.
Yeah, I'll bet.
Thanks, I don't know, it might have, maybe it was a, it's something that was funded for a period of time, but if we, it'd be an amazing thing to bring back. Um, okay. Is that all your stuff?
I think so, if you have any questions, I'm always here, email me, you know, I'd love to collaborate, and I'd love seeing us, like, work collaboratively in Mrs. Boy on every level.
And thank you for being ever-present in storm response and helping, and particularly, I was away after the storm on a planned vacation, and I know you were a great support to the deputy mayor and to trustee Wood, trustee Starbuck, who acted in my stead, so thank you.
I do have to say, I didn't write it in my report, because it was a different thing, but I did have a one-on-one with the governor yesterday, and I did say, please push the president for individual assistance.
Great.
In response to the storm, and then today I got a press release, I don't know if it's related, but.
Well done. Reports of trustees, any, anything that the review wants us to know. You survived the last three weeks.
I've got a couple, more on our progress on the master of clean energy communities, which work, so the LED lighting installation was thanks to the first grant that we got. We were just awarded two more, so five thousand dollars because we did our first heat pump campaign, and then that gave us enough points for ten thousand dollars more, so soon I'll, so I'd like to come back with some ideas for you all to discuss of how we want to spend our nice fifteen thousand dollar grant on clean energy work. And since we were successful in that first community campaign, we're going to do two more, one is just to keep going on heat pumps, so if anyone installs a heat pump in the village of Cold Spring. June first onwards, please tell us, and then we get credit for it. And then also, if you buy an electric vehicle, starving like last week onwards, tell us, and if there are five villagers who do, then we get five thousand dollars, and if we get ten heat pumps, then we get ten thousand dollars, so, and we're working with the town's climate spark task force to do some outreach, and collaborate on this.
So there'll be alerts out.
There will be alerts, and I, yeah, we'll need to announce this kind of formally with a press release, so I'll work on that.
Awesome.
Um, and.
That's it, it's amazing. It's amazing. I think I've said most of the things that I needed to say, but I do want to acknowledge that in the storm response. There has, you know, the village, I think, it's fair to say that for a long time, the village was something of an island. For, for a variety of reasons, and it couldn't be more clearer after the storm and thinking about where we go from here, that we are building relationships and, and, and have relationships, we had active contact with. Not only the county BES and the legislator, but county highway, county executive, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services, Representative Levinberg was constantly in contact, Senator Rollison. Senator Rollison, and even, even the command staff at West Point. So the problems that we're going to have to address post-storm and our long-term thinking about storm term management, we have big problems that need big solutions. And some of those solutions are going to need to be approached intermunicipally with the town and the village and down the town and the two villages. Last night, I said that the supervisor and the mayor, Mayor Winward and I met with Meridian, we also met with the town's grant writer. The town, the town has a grant writer on retainer. The town is willing to extend that service to the villages related to a few of the intermunicipal approaches, including dam and storm water that we need to come together. And the first step would be for us to create the narrative of the issues that we're facing together. And then that, the, the grant writer and his team will help, help us to consolidate and identify funding sources. That's the piece that's really essential and has been missing in terms of capacity in the village, is being able to identify the grants among the zillion grants that are available and finding the right fit. So thank you to our neighbors in the town, and we look forward to what we'll learn and identifying solutions together. Thanks. Okay, so the next item is a resolution relating to CEER, State Environmental Quality Review Act, identifying the introduction of Chapter 86 and the modification of 130 under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There is no significant impact on the environment and no further environmental review necessary. This was prepared by the clerk in consultation with the village attorney, and I wonder if the trustee will make a motion.
Cool. And read it. Go for it.
Yep. This is a, this is a roll call and read in the record.
Yep. Resolution 27, 2023, classifying amendments to Chapter 130 and adding Chapter 86 to the village code as type 2 actions under CEER. Following resolution was offered by Cora Bosie for adoption and seconded by, so other Addy to it. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has considered an adoption of amendments to Chapter 130, water of the village code, and adding Chapter 86 procurement to the village code of the Village of Cold Spring, Putnam County, New York. Whereas none of the proposed amendments or addition of the new chapter involve the creation of new programs in the village or constitute a major reordering of priorities. Whereas each proposed amendment and/or the addition of this new chapter is designed to update their respective chapter to comply with state law or other identified issues related to continuing agency administration management. Whereas after comparing the thresholds contained in six NYC R617 dot four and five, the village board has determined that the proposed adoption of the above cited amendments additions is a type 2 action that meets threshold, the threshold found in six NYC R617 dot five C26. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board hereby declares that no further review under CEER of the amendments proposed to Chapter 130, nor the addition of Chapter 86 of the village code is required.
We'll go look quick.
Trustee Bosie?
Aye.
Trustee Fadden?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Phillips?
Aye.
Mayor Bull?
Aye.
The next resolution relates to Chapter 86.
So we're adopting 86, but not yet?
Yeah. So we can write, we're in agreement. We feel comfortable proceeding with 86 and keeping 130 open.
Yes.
Go ahead.
And
Okay, well, we've, we have closed the public comment period. So the, there were a number of items addressed that were typographic, et cetera. The clerk has, the clerk is aware of those, and the formatting issues that were raised, it happened at the next phase, which is when the chapter gets formatted for additions to the code book. So those issues aren't a concern, a continuing concern. Would someone like to make a motion regarding Chapter 28?
I can.
I mean, Chapter 86.
Resolution 28 dash 2023, adopting local law 04 of 2023, adding Chapter 86 procurement. The following resolution was offered by myself, Woods, for adoption and seconded by Captain Buddy to wit, whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has cause to be prepared a draft of the local law at, to add Chapter 86 procurement of the code. And whereas the Village of Cold Spring of Board of Trustees held a duly notice public hearing on the draft local law beginning on August 9, 2023. And whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has complied with the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, as it applies to the adoption of draft local law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the local law number 04 of 2023 is hereby adopted, and the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all of the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption procedure, including filing said local law with New York State Office of Secretary of State on a roll call.
Trustee Bosie?
Aye.
Trustee Fadden?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Bull?
Aye.
The comments that were raised during
I'm sorry, Marie, the public comment period has been closed. We will have a public comment period at the end of the meeting. Right now, you do not have the floor. Continuing on to Resolution 29 dash 2023, I make a motion to table this resolution. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item 13, board business. I know in the last session, you all had conversations about the Church Street block party with the folks who are organizing that. They have come back with a slight modification. They prefer to hold the event on Sunday 9/3, which is the rain date for Community Day. And if Community Day gets rained out Saturday and they get bumped, they would like to continue to the following Saturday 9/9. Works for them better logistically. The officer in charge is comfortable with that. Any concerns? Okay, I guess you probably have a motion and make a motion to approve the revised request from Drena Fagan related to the Church Street block party. All in favor?
Aye.
The next is really lovely. Gretchen Dykstra has requested to sponsor a plaque for Jack Goldstein on the bench in front of Paulette's. As Larry will attest, Paulette's was Jack's favorite morning coffee spot, and Mike, Mike Turton as well, who knows this from experience. She has asked to have a bench created for him, and she will cover the cost of that. I would, I would love to say yes to that, and I would like also to request the trustees that we waive the installation fee, as we did when the bench was dedicated for former deputy mayor Campbell in front.
Can I just clarify, is it, we're installing the plaque or, or a bench?
The bench is installed.
It's just
We ordered the plaque and cover the cost of the plaque, and I'm asking that we waive for church judges in recognition of Jack's service to the village. All in favor?
Aye.
I guess we need, I need a motion. A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's not the cleanest motion in the second.
It's an emotional motion.
It is, it is. Quite fitting. Um, we have moved 13C down to the end of our conversation, so we'll come back to that. Item D, the deputy mayor, I'm sorry, deputy supervisor Flaherty referred to earlier. The village has a fueling tank and pump currently at the highway department, which, as you know, is very near the waterfront. It is long, long, long out of code compliance, and the pump is broken. The town has, in its upgrade of its night legislator, in the update, sorry, in the update of its highway department property, installed code compliant pumps that provide greater capacity for tracking fuel use, et cetera. We've had this discussion before, but just bringing the, the, the public up to speed. We have asked the town if they would be willing to share that service with the village. They are willing to share that service with our police department, fire department, water and wastewater, and highway crew for all of our vehicles and equipment. The assignment of FOBS, so we can track our use and be billed at cost. This is huge, not only in terms of efficiencies, but environmentally. We need to get that tank off that waterfront. It's, it's been, but he's been requesting repair of that tank for years, and it's time. So next step, after we, I assume, we will prove this. If we approve this, the next step will be laying out a plan for, thank God, it is a, it's an above-ground tank, so we're not facing the same issues that you were with the subsurface tank. Sure, there will be some soil removal, but thank God it's not underground. So any discussion of, this has already been approved by the town. I'm asking for your approval to sign it. Any discussion?
I think this is great.
Have a motion, please?
Motion to authorize the mayor's assignment of his unit or unit with the village down for fuel provision.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Super.
If you had to replace that with it, it's very expensive.
Wow. Come up, it was estimated at, you know, at minimum between $100,000 and $200,000 to have, to have, I mean, just, just the remediation work. Yeah. So it's big, it's big. Thank you.
We are bringing a system, so I'm already happy to help.
Yes. And I will say that your, your highway staff, Marie, Etta, has been fantastic working with our accountant to make the logistics work. So thank you very much. And thank you to fire and police for being willing to drive up there. Very, very quick, since it's a long night, quick update on Community Day. I mean, when you choose Superwoman to chair the event, she, she is Superwoman. The vendors are in place. The entertainment is in place. The community organizations are lined up. Our events coordinator has assisted with some of that. So we're ready to roll for Community Day. We will need volunteers day of. And so I am asking, please, folks to come on to help Wonder Woman and the events coordinator day of. That's when we really need bodies on the ground. If you're interested in doing that, please be in touch with the clerk. I want to talk as a, as a body about fireworks. The fireworks have traditionally been donated for Community Day. It's a $14,000 to $15,000 expense. It's a lot of money that gets burned very quickly, and it's beautiful. It's a lot of money that gets burned very quickly. It is very likely that the donors who have supported fireworks in the past will support again. They need to be approached. But Angela, who is, who is chairing the event, has made a recommendation that we not do fireworks, but potentially do some other sort of closing ceremony, whether it's music at the bandstand or something else. And I wanted to get the board's sense of that. You know, we are in a time when everybody is spending, related to storm response, it's not village money that would be spent on fireworks, but it is still being spent. Conversation key.
Well.
People love fireworks.
People love fireworks.
Right?
It attracts people.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, deputy supervisor, you don't have the floor, but that's a good point. That's, that's a good point, because Community Day is about local residents, and fireworks will tend to draw people in from, from beyond the community. So, you know, is it compatible with Community Day is the question.
I mean, I think the question is really, should be posed to the people who would be donating the money. If they're willing to do it, I think it's fine to move ahead.
We do have a reservation with a fireworks company, but we need to make a decision so that we can pull the trigger and get the money.
Only if we have the money, obviously.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have an argument with that philosophy. I, I do think there's a growing sentiment not to do noisy fireworks. I'd be interested in hearing just from the community. Do they want fireworks? I mean, if it's Community Day, I don't know how you pull that.
Well, and, and we have to move quickly so that we secure it. Yeah.
Heard a lot about fireworks and how people want it. I guess I tend to agree with tweets. If the donor wants to give it, and it can happen, then, but, but I guess, but it's helpful to say the number, like for everybody to recognize that, like, I don't know if most people know how expensive fireworks are. I didn't know that. Yeah, incredibly expensive.
They're wonderful. And I don't know, last year, we had the luck of overlapping with West Point's Labor Day events, given everything that's happening at West Point.
It's the next day.
It's the next day. They are doing it. I didn't know.
The meeting that we discussed Community Day.
Thank you. Thank you for filling in. Okay, well, I'll give a shot. We'll see where we are.
Otherwise, we can find something, a very nice way to end.
Music last, was it?
With this music, it was fireworks.
Oh, that was
Yeah. The last chord on the guitar.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that feedback. Next. So Anne Bouchard serves as our registrar, and among her duties is the issuance of birth certificates. She is a part-time employee. She's here two days a week. Deborah Petrowski, good night. Deborah Petrowski has the training and accreditation required to issue those permits. Naming her as deputy registrar would give us capacity five days a week to serve the public, and not say you have to come back on Tuesday or Friday. So I would make a motion to appoint Deborah as deputy registrar. All in favor? Hi, thank you very much, Deborah. Another expansion services in village, village hall. Next is a bit of a bummer. Our general liability insurance is up for renewal. We budgeted for a 10% increase. It's an 11% increased because of rising costs of replacement. Not really a lot you can do about it.
What does that equal?
You know, I was afraid you were going to ask.
Indicated that it was $300 extra.
Huge amount of money.
Three oh four. Okay. You made it sound really
Yeah.
dramatic.
I mean
I mean, you're representing Michelle.
$304. So may I have a motion? This is by resolution. Go ahead. Something you wanted to discuss?
Nope.
We're reading.
This is Resolution 30.
Okay. I'm not making a motion, reading. Resolution 30 dash 23, approving the renewal of general liability insurance. The following resolution was offered by myself, Woods, for adoption, seconded by to wit, whereas the renewal of the Village of Cold Spring's general liability insurance was due on its first 2023. And whereas the village has received a proposal from the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal, and whereas the premium of, for this renewal is up $127,470 and $0.49. Now therefore, it hereby be resolved that the Village of Cold Spring renews the general liability insurance policy through the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal, and to be further resolved that the village clerk is authorized and instructed to execute the plan's documents on behalf of the Village of Cold Spring. This is a roll call.
Trustee Bosie?
Aye.
Trustee Fadden?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Aye. We have made it through. Let's go. Who's next?
Who's going to do the bills resolution?
And anything you need us to know?
What was it, $120,000?
Yes. Yes, but
But it's done.
It's done. It's done. We have our connection again. It is working. Health department approvals and we're set to go. This is years and years worth of work. So happy to sign these checks.
So motion to approve the bills for Dodge number 6999 in the amount of $135,3638 and $19 cents. I think only one bill was last year. All of us issued.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm now with our agenda modification. I would like to make a motion to enter executive session.
Should we do public comment?
We could do public comment if you'd like. Folks may want, we will come, so we will enter executive session to discuss the appointment, and then come back out of executive session to make the vote in public.
Okay.
I'm happy to do it either way. If there's, there are folks who are wishing to make comment on another topic. Okay, so I will thank you, make a motion to enter executive session to discuss Make a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment history of individuals applying for the data review committee for the Hudson Highlands Fear Trail. Then we will repeat. So all in favor?
I.
I. So we will shut off the recording and ask everyone to leave the room and we will welcome you back in in just a few minutes. This shouldn't take long. And we will be shutting. Good night. Thanks for being here. Now, how do we, what, how do we manage the? That's the recording. How do we manage taking Michael and Ms. Feldman off the session?
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Here are you.
Yeah.
My. Dane fact?
Oh, yes.
I'm waiting.
Right. And you good? Um, I would like to make a motion to exit executive session. May I have a second? All in favor?
I.
I. And for no, we, there are no, there are no actions taken in executive session. So there's no first and second to report. There's no motion in second. But I would like to make a motion now. Um, we had four candidates for applicants for this position. It is a critical position going forward as the village is asked to review environmental impact statement and other documentation related to the fear trail. We have the opportunity to have folks at the table who can review data and can make sure that we're asking the questions parks and, and fear trails asking the questions we need to ask to give us the information we need to make good choices as we work with them. As the progress, as soon as the project goes forward. Two of our candidates, um, uh, data is a profession for them. One of them is, is with us this evening. Henry, Henry. Now I'm saying James LeBate. James LeBate is online. Henry, drawing a blank on your last name. Fleming?
Feldman.
Feldman. Excuse me. Henry's in the room with us. They've got skill set. They've got the temperament and I think that they will represent us well. So I would like to make a recommendation that we appoint Henry Feldman and James LeBate to the, to represent the village on the data review committee.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, really. Thank you. This is great.
Oh, thanks.
It's really great.
And James, thank you. If you're there.
I'm working with him.
So James, James actually has done a lot of helpful work for the village in the past in terms of assisting us with mapping where there were no maps before, like, you know, sewer system and uh, and that assisted with the development of updated maps for the aqueduct connection. So he is not a new volunteer for the village. And we're glad to have him back. I'm glad to have him back and I'm so delighted to have him.
Oh, so thank you.
So the first meeting of that committee is taking place, we believe, next week. They have not given a date yet. So as soon as we have information, we will pass it on and we'll connect you both electronically to Amy Gasala from HHFT. Make the introduction. Thank you. Any further public comment? Yes. Name and address, please, for the record.
Um, Lilian Moser, 215 Main Street, apartment one. I'm going to put on a couple of different hats while I'm sitting here. So hat number one, as vice president of the fire company, I'd like to thank trustee Bozy for attending fire academy graduation. It was very nice to have her there. I don't think a lot of the other instructors saw her in the background, but I knew she was there. So. Number two, take that hat, put the event coordinator hat back on. Um, just to let you know, um, the one thing that I'm still waiting for, for community day is I'm waiting for an answer from Phillips Town Volunteer Ambulance Corps about if they're going to be able to supply us with an EMT for the event. Soon as I find out from that, all of the emergency services then is taken care of through the back.
In, in your last session, when you all talked, did you explain your logic? Or, yeah.
Yeah. So I've spoken to both the president and the captain. They're, they're looking at putting a volunteer sheet up to see if one of the EMTs will just give up four hours of their time on late day weekend to come hand out Band-Aids, nice packs. Please, yes, please, very much so. Um. And again, I would just personally, as a village resident, like to thank not only my brother and sister firefighters, but also the village response and all the response because I am one of the many residents who had flood damage due to the July 9th storms and it's amazing how this village just pulled together between emergency services and just community members and stuff like that. I mean, I, when the thing went out for the sandbags, I put a post on Facebook and said, if somebody could drop sandbags over my house, that would be great. All of a sudden I had six sandbags in front of my front door. So it was like.
Right on.
So I just want to personally thank everybody for that.
Thank you. That's how it works when you live in community. Thank you. Um, and I'm glad you're back in the house. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I would like to second.
All in favor?
I.
We're all freezing. Are we stopped the recording? I'm not going to say anything controversial. I just want to make sure we shut off.